Oh, go ahead and get started. Roll call, please.
James Maryman. Robert Higgin.
Here.
Arlene Schaefer. Here. Michael Schaefer.
He's here.
Art Harry.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, this time has been set aside for public comments. Do we have any public comments? If you feel honored.
Don't move for a mic.
I think I can project. I wish to speak to a variety of whenever opportunities arise for the issues of fees and fairness. So, that's... Thank you. Be fair. This is the anything time?
This is the time, yeah, this is the time for public comments.
Yeah, you mean during this... This is a planning session for you guys?
Yeah.
And people can't throw out something?
Oh, yeah, now's the time.
Now's the time to throw it out?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that you really need to evaluate who has what kind of cans and how many cans are out there and how many cans are being used and priced accordingly. For instance, those of us who are old and downsizing, no longer have fleet of kids to make trash, put their cans out maybe once every couple of weeks. I'll give you all my green waste. I do my own gardening. And I have big cans because when they were delivering cans in the first place, way back, I don't know how long, how old these are, the guys said, you know, "Take one of the big ones." And here, we're sort of out of the small ones anyway right now, so take two. And so we did, because we said, you know, does scum and cost us anything? No, doesn't cost you anything, okay, fine. So, maybe you should charge per can out, used, not sitting empty or getting ready for refill. You want anymore? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. West, what's that? I guess I'd like to ask the Vila. Is there any... Couple things. Is there any way to address what kind of cans every resident has?
Yes, we could enumerate and we could collect that data, but we wouldn't be able to charge accordingly because that is something that was brought to the board when we did the rate study.
That would give my next question.
So, if the five-year increase was already approved, we wouldn't be able to go back and now enumerate. This was presented to the board and the CDC on a number of times, and the board and the CDC both decided that there were too many unknowns. The costs for the district to be able to charge based on the card size were too great or too great of a burden for the district to bear.
Could I also request that maybe staff contact this Vila and at least get rid of these big monsters that she has? If she doesn't need them, I mean, I'm old and feverly. I'm old and feverly too, and it's hard to... The big cans are hard to manipulate. If you don't need it, why have it? So, if we could reach out to her, maybe...
You can trade with her. Am I allowed to respond?
Of course.
Do I need to go up to the non-mic? Once in a while, I have big pieces of wood that I don't want to or unable to cut up to put into the eco-can, and so I throw it into the big cans. I can push them in and out of the gate, you know, in the yard. They're around. It's... I rarely use both of them, but there's an occasion, so often, where I'll fill them both. So, it's not a problem with the size of the can. It's a problem with that... I... It's... And the charges, I understood what you said about raising the rates this year. I'm perfectly satisfied with that part. I think you haven't had your rates raised in a long time. You said that. But when increasing rates in the future, maybe something... And this is part of the planning part, to think about some more fair ways. The guy across the alley from me and up one, he puts out at least three big cans. They're overfilled all the time, and he's got two in eco-cans. He pays the same thing I do. Oh, yeah, he has a big house and a big house full. I don't. And it just seems a little awkward to be paying... Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vila.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
September officer... September Code Enforcement Officer.
Oh, the microphone. Good morning, Ms. Ruten and members of the Board of Directors for the Costa Mesa Santeria District. Ed Roberts, your Code Enforcement Officer, presenting two reports this month. One will be the September 2019 report and the October 2019. I'll start with the September as mentioned, number one. For the board, during the course of the month, I conducted five investigations where I caught up to the scavenger. Received a higher number of complaints coming into the system alleging scavenging. The problem is, is by virtue, these folks are operating very early morning hours, 4:30, 5:00, for example. Our hours do start at 7:30. I do adjust my hours accordingly. If there's one that has intensity or it's a repeat offender, I will adjust and come in early in an effort to see if I can locate them. So, for the benefit of the board, I delineated the five locations. Couple new spots that I've noticed that increase in frequency. The corridor around Kimona and 18th Street, James Street, there's a high number of Harvard buildings and client properties that we service. So, I did make contact with one out there in the center block of James. There's a brief narrative attached to each one of them. None of them stand out. There's no issues of any concern that I noted beyond, you know, sort of cooperative contact. Does anyone have any questions, Ed Roberts, please?
I have a question. Have you noticed that there's not as many homeless on the streets because of what the city's doing over in Anaheim and the bar?
No, sir. I would say it remains status quo, in my opinion. I'm in and out of the alleys. And, like, for example, Harbor Boulevard and 19th, I haven't seen anything substantial that would really think has been reduced. I'm aware of the city's efforts. Just keep in mind, people do gravitate to the coastal zones, especially in the colder months. So, like, the city of San Monica, for example, get an influx of indigent folks that gravitate to the beach areas just because of, you know, the climate's a little bit better for them out there. I do notice I did get a complaint that was out of the ordinary on 19th Street in the area of Palace Avenue, which is Palace Avenue. It's pretty much a dedicated alley with walls and everything. There's been a series of resident complaints that I've received, just folks rummaging through the trash carts. And it may not always be indigent individuals. It could be just folks supporting themselves with economy, just trying to make ends meet by recycling. So, you'll come across a lot of folks that are just older men and women just, you know, trying to make ends meet by, you know, recycling and everything.
Wallops has always been a hard area to...
I spend a lot of time on Wallops, especially in that alleyway at Two Kitchen.
Right.
Someone who cares is actually very responsible. At least with me, they've always been very, very accommodating. They'll be able to park either, park a lot of times, watch us go down.
No, easy. I grew up on Wallops.
Oh, yeah, sir.
Do you feel like your eyes were looking at you? Even though I'm looking at you.
Just a lot of activity. I try to, you know, I... The way I do my patrol pattern is, it's very common sense. You know, I stay with the trash route, obviously, and I'll react to all the complaints. I just don't see a tremendous decrease in the population. It seems that was quoting me. But I can probably pay a little bit more attention to it.
Yeah, if you could, certainly. Because we went to a meeting last week. They talked about they're housing like 46 residents, and they're doing a good job. And they think that the city's saying that there's not as many out there. Just for... I was asking for your opinion.
You know, sir, in all fairness to the city, I'm well aware of their efforts. And I mean, I'm sure they've got data to support their efforts. I just, I happen to be in the hotspots. I happen to be in alleyways where, you know, it's kind of like ground zero for that stuff. So, maybe, you know, it looks unchanged to me.
Next time we meet, maybe just give us enough...
I'd be glad to do that. Let me know, Paul.
Okay. I had a question. Over the year, have you seen that much change as far as who you have to accommodate or talk with? In other words, there's a lot of building going on, a lot of condos, a lot of different areas. Has this increased as far as for CRNR for picking up and meaning that you would have to cover too?
Ms. Schaefer, I don't think so. I think most of these developments that have gone out by virtue of the density, you know, you see mostly like dumpster service as opposed to residential trash carts. And there's certainly a learning curve for newer properties, newer residents that move in. And our... The way our program is structured with the yellow cards, the door hangers, the tabs, and the fact that we stress in-person contact makes it kind of like a low-stress enforcement strategy, which I think is great. And the ability to just go knock on someone's door and just, you know, here's a reminder. This is why we're doing what we do. This is the spirit of the ordinance. And most times, we get the complaints right off the bat. And I think most folks that are spending a lot of money there are to live in Costa Mesa are vested in keeping Costa Mesa attractive. So, I haven't seen any problems.
So, CRNR kind of works with you as far as if something...
I don't really work with CRNR on a day-to-day basis. You know, as problems arise that require...
I'm just thinking the barrels, you know? The increase or decrease of barrels, what happens? You know, if something... Somebody moves and...
CRNR has always been very receptive to us. Like, when we try to troubleshoot a problem. So, if there is an issue, like where carts have just been abandoned, which has happened, or in an alleyway, then they're very receptive to us. And if Vila jumps on it, we jump on it and just try to cure the problem before it turns into a bigger problem. Starts... More carts are gravitating to the area. But I haven't seen any issues with the result of the development.
Joe Bob, just real quick. I think there are certain levels of homelessness. And believe me, I'm as far away from being an expert on homeless populations as I can be. But spending two days in Sacramento last week, you see a different level of homelessness. And I think this is indicative of, that's a very strict... I mean, that's a urban area. That's a big city. Here, the homeless seem to be... In Sacramento, you see them all the time. You know, I walk to our office from the hotel to our office building at 7:00 in the morning, and every warm doorway, whether it be a florist, florist shop, or a market, there's somebody sleeping there. I mean, we... It's so much more hidden. It's not hidden here. I mean, we see homeless people. They seem to gravitate during the daytime like a McDonald's. Bob, you see them at McDonald's. There has to be a different level of home...
I would say so. I mean, just based on my limited experience, you could go to, like, Santa Ana Civic Center, for example, not just very busy Santa Ana, but, you know, that obviously, their problem is exponentially huge compared to ours. And then my experience over on the other end of things, going to downtown Los Angeles, City Rose, Kitchener, and sort of those areas where the emissions are, you do see. And I'm sure there probably isn't doubt in the support, like, the various degrees of how people are, the functionality, and where they're at as far as, you know, access to resources and stuff. Costa Mesa problem is serious, but I wouldn't say it's crippling compared to what it's... But I don't want to venture into territories that's of my priority.
Well, the thing in large counties, we get judges that are taking the issue strongly. In Sacramento, it's sort of, and I'm sure in a lot of big cities, unless, like in LA, you have a mayor who's actively working or doing whatever he does. Sacramento, I don't know. I don't think they do much of anything. I think they just let it get up. And it's really bad.
Probably agree with that. I've seen some stuff in Sacramento that I might want to...
Do you want to do the October review?
Yes, if I could. Just to finish off September 2019, there were 130 notices issued, separate cases open and closed. No revie instances, no. And October 2019, six...
Before you go, I'm sorry. Gina Cook, and the rest of the board, I don't know how you feel. I think it's time, maybe in an upcoming news letter, to give some particular notice or, you know, population to cart policy, what people need to know. I mean, for someone to have... When I look down this list of violations, people with four or five violations in a month, that's ridiculous. And maybe they just don't know where they can or can't store their... Maybe we do an article that says, hey, just a reminder about your cart, your trash carts?
We could do one. We just, I think we did one in the summer article, or summer newsletter. But coming up again, we could do another.
Associate holidays, it's going to be. And people need to be reminded not to stack their Amazon boxes on the side of... Or, see, I wish CRNR were here because I've watched these drivers get out of their trucks and pick up stuff for people. They don't have to do that, but they do. And I... That's a compliment to CRNR, obviously, but I think people just need to be reminded to put that stuff in there.
And to conclude, for October 2019, so total of 16 investigations and 112 trash container violations and everything in dress. And that concludes it for me. No revie, and nothing sticks out.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, what? Six, seven.
Okay, Chris Kepper and our caller, solid wage diversion report.
Vice President, these are just your standard monthly reports as an update as to how we are doing on toll and diversion. I am available for any questions you may have.
The board have any questions?
Just a quick question. It says 62.29%, but it doesn't list OCCs for this month of October.
So, only October is not included because I usually get those reports late.
Well, what percentage would that increase from 62.29% to what?
It's typically about 140 tons a month. So, it would increase it, but I don't think it would jump us to 60.
I mean, what percentage would that increase, do you think?
And I don't think that it would be enough to increase us to 62%. Because it's only typically about 140 pounds a month that they collect.
So, maybe a 10%.
Not 10%?
Point.
Like what?
10, 20.
So, that'd be like 2%, maybe? No, it's good. That's supposed to be 65%. I always ask the same question.
Thinking to be... Could you do, what, number four?
Yes.
Organic tenancy report?
Yes, that is also a just a monthly update.
We're going to expect... We're going to start expecting to see that organics kind of drop, I would assume, because we head into winter. We normally see it, except right into Christmas. We have all the trees, obviously. But we'll see that organics rate.
Yes, typically, and if we look at that first chart, it typically does decrease because grass grows a lot slower in the winter. There's not a lot of water, so there's not as many... There's not as many tons of the organics part.
Okay. Gina, legislative court report. They're starting to be connected over there.
Well, they just finished up their legislative season. So, there were actually a total of over 3,000 bills, constitutional amendments, and resolutions introduced in the state assembly and senate during this legislative season. So, they were very busy. The report contains a list of notable bills that passed, as well as those that were vetoed by Governor Newsom, as well as a few that will continue as two-year bills. So, I wanted to go over just some of the bills that passed, starting with Asunto and Cotty Future Norces Bill, AB 65. This bill intends to address the impacts of climate change by requiring the state coastal conservancy to prioritize giving grant funding to projects that utilize natural infrastructure. And that's in order to reduce greenhouse gases, to preserve our coastal wetlands, and to create recreational spaces. The next bill I wanted to talk about was AB 614, and this provides tax credits for the donation of food by farmers and manufacturers. So, that's going to start next year. AB 827 requires businesses that generate over four cubic yards of solid waste or over eight cubic yards of organic waste per week to provide clearly labeled recycling bins in their establishments. So, this applies to sort of fast food type restaurants or fast casual, but not to sit-down, full-service restaurants. And CalRecycle is going to be tasked with developing model signage for these places. So, hopefully, that will help encourage people to separate organics and maybe in turn help us with our organs personally.
You know, we go to some restaurants and they'll have three different... They'll say, you know, trash, or sometimes it'll say landfill.
Right.
And it'll say compostable. But you stand there and watch people as they throw their trash away. They have no clue where to put... I think we would, when we went to our organics cart and we put the little pictures on there, I think that did more make people comfortable about what we did in their organics cart than anything else we did. They know what to put. You know, you watch these people stand in front of these three holes, and they're looking like this, deciding, and then you know where most of it goes.
Especially Costco.
In the landfill or in the waste. Does Costco do that?
Yeah, they have all that. You know, just standing there and don't know what to do.
Or maybe that would be something to consider when you guys meet, you know, or, you know, for organics. This may be... Who picks up this organics from these restaurants? Does it just dump them into the regular trash waste?
I always wondered about that is, you know, if you go to places like Blaze... You ever been to Blaze Pizza? Where you walk up and you order the pizza they made before you, right? Well, we were there the other day, and my wife wanted a straw. They do not give out straws at Blaze Pizza. They give you a cup with a little city, like you give to your grandkids. But you wonder after it's all done, at the end of the day, when that 17-year-old... Not looking around, there's no... When that 17-year-old kid goes to throw that stuff away, where does it go?
Well, does this lock him into effect in January?
Um...
Would you say?
I'm not sure when that goes into effect.
July.
July. So, that may be something for you guys to consider.
That's a good point, Ron.
Yeah, that has to be picked up by someone. It has to be segregated.
Well, even... Any other jurisdiction in Costa Mesa does this. I, you know, I work a lot, and I see the white bins being picked up by the same... The big three-yard, four-yard bins being picked up and dumped in the same truck that the others... So, I talked to somebody, and he said, "Well, it depends on the jurisdiction whether or not you have to bring a truck out to pick it up to recycle." So, I mean, these little ones are one thing. It's the three-yard bins. They pick up both bins at the same time.
I know. I don't know if I'm correct. When I read this, that we have this bill that our legislative updated, SB RA. And I think we're going to see... These jurisdictions are going to have to hone this down because, you know, like in Costa Mesa, it can be one of 12 or whatever... Allers it is. So, I think it's a really good topic for us to talk about.
Where is this bill right now?
It's passed. It starts in July.
July.
City, like Bob said, the city has to have some type of regulation for this.
Well, the city, when the city will make them do what the law says, they'll have to have two bins.
That's ultimately...
They don't make CRNR and other vendors pick white bin up separately.
Well, I think, if I'm not mistaken, with this bill, they're going to have to have three bins.
Well, and if Costa Mesa doesn't make them pick up three bins separately, they'll all go on the same truck.
Can I make a suggestion that you let Scott know about this law? Does he know about the rate?
He does.
Maybe the next lights on meeting, that would be one of the topics that we say, you know, this is what's going to be happening, starting in July.
I don't know. The city seems to be pretty sensitive about being...
I know. But it would be good for those city council members to hear this, though. I'm not sure if they're empathetic about it, but at least we can present it as a question so that let him know this law is going to end up with that.
I think we should talk to the staff separately about the questions initially.
Maybe. I'm not sure.
No, I mean, or both.
Maybe it could be discussed if they need solid waste ad hoc community.
Yeah, that's why I threw that in. Yeah, I think this would be something we'll delve into.
Okay. The next bill I was going to mention was AB 849, and this was passed and it requires cities and counties to adopt new voting districts for their governing bodies after each decennial census, similar to what we did. This bill does not apply to special districts yet, but it could indicate that that's something that's coming to...
And we thought that would be coming.
Yeah.
And when does that go into effect?
I believe next year, January 2020.
So, it doesn't affect this next voting for this for 2020? Or I guess it did. But it's going to take a while to do this census.
Yeah. I got the feeling this bill was kind of a knee-jerk reaction to Mr. Shankman, to try to keep him from suing people. But they didn't include special districts.
Oh, did they?
It's only municipalities.
Okay, that's good.
Would you repeat what you said about this bill?
The description, sure. So, it requires cities and counties to adopt new voting districts for their governing bodies after each decennial census.
Okay, so over 10 years.
They'll wait till after the 2020 census. This probably won't even affect people until 2022, in my guess.
Because the data won't be available for the first year.
Yeah.
So, then, 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 if they have a timeline on doing it, they should do this.
Yeah, yeah, Bob, I think it was, you know, Shankman goes to sue a county or a city, they're going to say, "Oh, we've already... We're already following the legislation, so you really have cancer." But he'll still go after special districts until we get concluded in that.
The next bill is AB 1162, and this ban leaves of small plastic bottles for things like shampoo and lotion in hotels. So, that did pass. It applies to hotels with fifty rooms or more by 2023, and then it will apply to the smaller hotels by 2024.
It's elimination, would you say?
Yeah, you can't have...
The small bottles for shampoo and things.
I'm not going to start buying shampoo.
Oh.
They'll just have a dispenser.
It's funny, when you travel in Mexico, if you stay in a hotel in Mexico, you rarely get the little bottles. Almost all of them have, like, the dispensers in the shower or tether or whatever. I always thought that was a better way to do it, except who knows when people pour in those things, you know?
So, we feed with that rose, AB...
AB 1162. And next is AB 1486. This bill requires special districts to offer the right of first refusal for any surplus land to schools, affordable housing developers, and park agencies before entering any formal or informal negotiations to sell the land. And so, CSDA did oppose this bill. They made several amendments to it, but it did end up passing. It requires districts to notify the Department of Housing and Community Development before selling their land, and that department has to maintain a list of all the land for sale. The districts can specify restrictions on how the property can be used. I think that was one of the amendments that they implemented. And it does not apply to renting or leasing land, only the sale of land.
This is going to affect park districts and the water districts?
Yes, yes.
Because they seem to be the two agency, or the two types of districts that have a lot of, especially water districts, providing ranches... lot of, especially water districts, providing ranches are going to be selling a lot of their surplus land for a while, I think, with this kind of legislation.
They just develop it.
They just develop it.
You can develop, just not sell. And it can be a problem after the development.
But all these park districts that have these huge, you know, they get donated huge parcels of land for parks, and they find that it's too expensive to make paint a park, so they would sell it to a developer, make money for the, they're not going to help do that anymore.
That's going to be interesting.
And then the last bill I wanted to mention is SB 200. And this was the bill that established the Safe and Affordable Drinking Water Fund. And so that fund is going to receive an annual transfer of five percent of the proceeds from the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund, up to $130 million. And then the State Water Resources Control Board is going to be responsible for creating a plan to provide for supply of drinking water for the region.
So is this the bill they were talking about, possibly increasing the water fees? So that's not going to happen?
It's in, it's in blue.
This was in blue, that's good.
So that concludes my report, and then I'll look for any other questions.
The one bill that was, we were talking last week, we had, like I said, our legislative report in SB RMA. We looked at some of these, but we also looked at the ones that, it was almost like Newsom had a rubber stamp. He was approving bills, but there was one for law enforcement, where they have to take, they have to think of, before they would shoot somebody, they have to think if it's the right thing to do. And Newsom approved that. I wish he hadn't been here to get his thoughts, but the other one that was vetoed was the one where we had to retain records, remember that?
Or emails.
Emails and stuff. That was, that did not pass, he vetoed that. Which I think CSDA, read the big sigh of relief on that one.
Absolutely. I just wanted to compliment Gina, because we're looking good for CSDA, because we're on top of sending the letters and whatever they say, you know? We're either for or against a bill. And in fact, at the next CSDA meeting, I was going to say, if all of us in this room did that, we'd be at the table more than once.
Thank you, Gina. Okay, the next one is inflow infiltration. Rob, are you going to do this?
I will get that for you. I have that cut out. And could you pull up detachment, go down until you see the map, please?
I like to make a smoke report.
Rob, do you know where that picture, you know where that picture is?
No.
That's not even in the district.
That I know. None of the pictures are.
There's a lot of vaping going on in that area.
Serious vaping. Thank you, board member. So, up, like back, back of the? Right there. Okay. So, as we, as we know, we are not supposed to allow rainwater into the sewer system. There are places in the United States, including San Francisco, that have combined systems that have their storm water and their wastewater commangled into a system, but not down here. So OCSD has always had a goal to limit I and I, inflow and infiltration. And we've been at it since they first asked us to. And our main method of identifying how the water gets into the sewer has been to plug and seal the manhole covers of manholes that are in alley flow lines, manholes that are near the curb. City has a list of streets that flood, we plug and seal those. Anything we believe is low-lying area, we plug and seal. We probably have a thousand manholes out of five thousand plugged and sealed. So the next method used to test where water is coming into the system is by using a smoke test. So this is, what we have here is, this is the tributary area to Mendoza Pump Station. So everybody in that area, their wastewater flows to Mendoza Pump Station, which is our biggest offender during a storm, meaning when it rains, the pumps run extra, a lot, more than any other station. Too much, we need to figure out where it's coming from. So the method of this effort is smoke testing. They take a little smoke machine and they put it over a manhole and drive the smoke in to the system. And the smoke will come out anywhere there's an opening. It'll come out the manhole holes of the manhole upstream. It'll go through someone's lateral and come up through their vent up high above their house. It will also come up at an illegal connection. If someone's backyard happens to be tied to the sewer because it doesn't drain well and they want to drain it to the sewer, then smoke will come out of that. So in our first smoke testing, we tested what is shown in green here. And Arlington is about right here, Arlington Drive. So this is the armory, this is on the fairgrounds, and these are two fairgrounds points. So out of the hole, let's call it the southeast portion, the southeast half of the Mendoza Pump Station, tributary area, they smoke tested every line here, and in six places, smoke came out of something that it shouldn't come out of. And those are places where if smoke can come out, water can come in. And a couple of them are on Orange County Fairgrounds property. And some of, one is in someone's front yard, right here. This is really almost inconsequential. But this is the National Armory, and these are fairgrounds. And so we found six places, one, two, three, four, five, six. And there's really, we didn't find a source large enough to replicate to how much extra time our pumps are pumping. However, we do know that there are other connections on the fairgrounds that may have been closed so that smoke didn't come out, and that smoke could have come out if they were open. So the study recommends that we kind of put a meter in this line, and we meter the dry flow here and wet weather flow coming into our system to see whether the fairgrounds is contributing substantially, a substantial amount of water. We know in the past, they had a whole parking lot that drained right into our sewer. They fixed that, but the state water board wants them to keep open drains that are open to the sky, that go to the sewer. They want them to keep those because they don't want that animal washdown of water getting into Arlington Storm Drain. So the idea is during the summer, when they wash down the animals, that water goes into the sewer. And then come winter, they close the valve. Well, if they close the valve, there's going to pond, and then they have to get rid of it. So are they closing the valves or are they not closing the valves? So that's the reason why we would want to put a meter in here to see what happens over the winter. So when they found a point where the smoke came out, they also measured the area that's tributary to that little drain, meaning how much land drains to that drain? Is it someone's front yard? Is it fifty feet by fifty feet? Or is it larger than that? So Gina, let's scroll down a little bit, and we'll look at a couple of these points.
Before you go over that, Rob.
Sure.
You commented about the state water board wants the, an open air drain for the animal washdown. We know darn well, or at least I think darn well, they're washing down more than animals into that drain.
That's right.
I mean, when that horse does its thing and it's, so they're trying to keep those materials out of the storm drain. They want them to go to OCSD essentially, don't they? Is that, is that the idea?
Yes. They, they, exactly that. So, so those are the six, one through six. And these were miscellaneous sources. These are cleanouts that didn't have caps or cracked caps, so a little bit of smoke came out of these. So these don't really count, no rainwater is really going to get in these because they're so small. But these were the six. So keep going, Gina? Well, hold on. Here's the number right there, possible inflow and gallons per foot. So you can see that this wash area on Arlington, an area drain, thank you, was one of the largest ones. And this is a suspected area. So keep scrolling. All the way, let's scroll. It'll go through, this is a great border.
Rob, I have a question.
Sure.
You're strolling. We're, you know, I'm trying to understand the jurisdiction of this, because there's a state board, but yet the counties, this is the county area too. And yet, here we are, if you come out onto, past the county, onto our streets. So where are we in jurisdiction of this? Do you understand what I'm saying?
We own the sewer system, and we are allowed to say, no rainwater in the sewer, to anybody who's connected to the sewer.
So have we worked with them at all on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a little more? So these are the first two on Santiago, right there in that front yard. Now scroll up this a little bit. This way. A little more? Let's stop. The area, four feet by five feet, three feet by four feet, that's not, how much rainwater's going to land in three by four and then go in? Not much. Not enough to double the flow at Mendoza. So these are small potatoes. So why don't you keep scrolling, and we'll get to the next group? Keep going. Over those two again, right there, side by side. Keep going. Let's go down to four. That's a small potatoes, one, two, four by eight. Okay, now we're, okay, right here, number four. Now we're starting to get into some area, twenty feet by twelve feet. That's not a lot of area, but you can get some rainwater in that area. So want to scroll down and look at where it is? There's the armory, right there. So in the little corner of the armory is a drain that goes into the sewer. There's the little tennis club. This is Unifor, Arlington's down here. So that's one source that we need to investigate.
Is that a manhole or a cleanup?
It, one more, it's just, it's a flat drain. One more slide. There it is, right there. So we need to look into that. Let's go to the next two. The next two are on the fairgrounds. Now, look at that side, it's thirty-four by twenty. We're getting larger area, larger area, more rain. So want to look at the map here? There's one of our washdown areas. We know that there are three. We've been on record with fairgrounds a number of times, and they do have some open areas that they swear they closed during the winter, but during the summer, they leave them open. So our study says, well, let's make sure they're good to their word. Let's put a flow meter in somewhere up in here, which would be a good idea. Okay, there's one more, Gina? Keep going. That's the area, there's the washdown. So number six, twenty by twenty, that's four hundred square feet. This is suspect. It's, it's covered, but it has a drain in there. And it's probably contributing. So that, that's the results of the first smoke test of the southeastern half of Mendoza Tributary Area, which we did not find enough large area to indicate the amount of water that we are seeing when we have a storm. So the study recommends, or the staff reports got prepared, recommend to follow through with the recommendations shown in the study and budget to smoke test the northwest half of the Mendoza Tributary Area. We've got to find a source because of the amount of water we're getting in there. It's just a lot of water, and we may need to do a little more work in the fairgrounds area when we do the other half of Mendoza. So those are basically the results.
Obviously, I mean, they're a big answer. Are you, go ahead, put the flow meters in?
Those are part of the, those are part of the recommendation.
Okay, then the, of, of, area above Mendoza, is that Sonora School area? Do you think, we plug the Sonora School?
Want to go way back, Gina, to?
The initial map?
Way up there.
Okay. Right above, or, I think that's Sonora School area right there.
This is Sonora School?
Above your green, first green line.
This here?
Where it says north.
Oh, up there?
Yeah, there, is that the area you're going to move to next?
The area we're going to move to is, all this green is what we tested.
Right.
This area here, we didn't test. So everything that doesn't have a green line in it, which would be this half, which would include Sonora School.
We haven't plugged anything to Sonora School, have we?
I don't think so. We did a lot of plugging and sealing for this system. And Mendoza Pump Station is right here. So, all this area flows up to there.
Mike. It just, it's pretty obvious, and we've seen this for years, that the problem is the fairgrounds.
Exactly.
And I think we have as, not as major a problem. I think Fairview Valley Center is still a problem. And I mean, you've thought of that for a long time. But the fairgrounds continues to, I guess my comment would be, now that they're going through some changes in management and board, it's time we reach out to the, the new CEO of the fair and say, you know, with rainy season coming up.
Right.
You guys, because it'll get worse. Well, that's what I was thinking before, is our plan to put a flow meter in? Or do we have to get permission to do that or we just do?
No, we'll put the flow meter in our line.
It's our line, yes.
So, what we'll do is, we'll put the flow meter in right for the rainy season and then we'll measure daily flow and see what happens when it rains. See if that rainwater is really coming through or whether they're close those valves. And that may, that may tell us a lot.
My suspicion is it has nothing to do with the valves. It has to do with them opening manholes in low-lying areas. That was, that, you know, when I used to run the sewage treatment plants, police would go to the flooded streets and they would open the manhole. And that, and that caused an enormous amount of flow. I mean, you could, those two little spots there, they're covered and, you know, they serve a purpose. They are not the problem. There are somewhere else in the fairgrounds where there are copy manholes. And, you know, and either we go in, do we own those manholes? Our ownership stops. I think our ownership stops about right there. So, there, so those are, those are our sewers on the fairgrounds grounds.
No, this, this is actually their sewer.
The green one is their sewer, but what about the one that has manholes on it?
This one here?
Yeah.
This one is the one that goes under the T Winkle Pond. Pond is on this side and on this side. But it's, this is capped off. Nothing goes in here.
Okay. Well, I, I think we all know what the problem is. It's been a historical problem since I've been on, you know, six. We can put a flow meter in there and if we have a drought, we may need to leave the flow meter in there for three or four years.
Yeah.
Because until, until their parking lot's pond and they whip out there and they just open the manhole and down it comes. I don't, I don't see any sense to do the other half of the area. Maybe on a very limited basis.
We do cross the flood control channel right here. We cross it once right there and we cross it twice, or once there too. So, this is the Polareno Channel.
Yeah. But it's lined, isn't it?
No, it's rock.
It's a rock, okay. I would hope that we would get the, the flow meter in there for this year. And it may take a couple of years before it really rains.
Very possible.
Historically, we have not seen, well, Rob, maybe I should ask this question. Historically, have we seen every winter these kinds of flows at Mendoza Pump Station?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the meter, the meter, if it's the fairgrounds, the meter would show it right away.
So, Mendoza is our biggest problem?
In terms of II, yes. It's a little worse than Eldon. Eldon's number two.
Eldon, Eldon has three or four.
Three stations pump into it.
Right.
Pump into it.
So, we don't know where, which one of those vehicles are.
Out of curiosity, have we budgeted for this at all or how do we look financially?
I think that's why.
Something in like that.
I believe in the recommendation, Scott suggested to budget for it for the next fiscal year. Can you go back to the staff report Gina?
What would be the cost of that?
Yeah, that's what I was.
It's not that much.
No, it's not.
I don't, I don't remember being a big expense line.
If you go further down to the finance section.
That's nice to know.
Right there. So, we paid 26,950 out of 40,000. Now could you go up to the recommendations? Those are the recommendations.
I, I, I think we should focus on fairgrounds before we do the other half of this. But it's not a bad idea. And we're legally required to go after these people. Their, their, their gift is the fairgrounds, they're violating the law. And I think the regional board got after them.
Yes, they did.
Last time that we had, we suspected that they had a problem.
We had their reports.
Yeah. I, you know, this is, this is a state agency, very concerned about the fairgrounds. Orange County Sand District's very concerned about where this water's coming from. And we're the responsible agency to try to figure out where it's coming from.
I think we know where it is.
Well, we, we have some very strong suspicions.
Have we documented all this?
This is all documented.
Right, okay.
This is all in a report done by a professional engineer.
Good.
The report's really well done. So, I agree that we need to look further into the fairgrounds.
And, you know, then it'll either, we'll either find the culprit or we will, or we will have to go doing more smoke testing.
We could use the difference between the 40,000 and the 26 that we paid. We could use that to go look deeper into the fairgrounds and then still budget for this 2021 and then we'd be continuously after it.
I'd be, I'd be curious to, if it's public record, if we can get it. I'd be curious to see what the water usage is at the fairgrounds overall. Water usage. If we can get their water, if I said their water bill. I'd be curious to see how much water they actually use on a monthly basis.
Mesa doesn't give up.
I think Mesa won't give up either.
I figured that.
This is just when it rains.
I don't understand that. But I think there's more than just when it rains. I think they're doing it a lot. I have 400, that 420 number was pretty obvious that they're doing some of this. That's during a non-rainy season.
Well, I think we all agree that November 21st, it'll be on our regular board agenda.
Well, I think that, that should, that should be the recommendation. Is that the recommendation?
It's the recommendation. Yeah.
We follow, this is a topic?
Well, we have some money left to do this because there was 40,000 allocated and we spent 26,950. So, we have some money to do the recommendations.
I think Scott should come back with an idea of what the flow meter would cost to have one installed.
Can we do that ourselves or have to do it?
These people can do it for us, this consultant. There's a few consultants that do install flow meters.
Get a, get a cost for that between now and morning.
He has, has done massive studies, Orange County's whole service area twice.
So, that's what we have. Okay, so.
That's really good.
So, this will be.
You getting fired up?
So, no action today because we're all having on the regular agenda.
And on the agenda, can you estimate the cost for us to do that at the fairgrounds for the flow meters?
Yes. And, and the potential schedule. Got it.
Okay.
Sounds good, good presentation.
Thank you.
The last item is oral communication and medical comments presented for the board. Anything more to work on?
I do. I was wondering if you all agreed on this, just as far as I'm concerned. I feel that we should have a two-person ad hoc committee and be able to turn around and evaluate our year as far as the activities we've done and, you know, where we're at and what we've accomplished from it.
I think you'd be like a one or two B.
And it could be on the agenda for the 21st.
Well, just to meet with Scott to go before he gives us his final report for 2019. That's kind of what, I think what you're saying, right? Scott, because normally Scott picks it, but there's some things that maybe the board wants to contribute to.
I think that would serve as a beginning of this evaluation.
Good idea.
So, that, that, that would be an agenda I live on the.
21st.
Board meeting coming up, which is, which is only nine days away.
Yeah.
Can you put that on that report?
Sure, so an ad hoc committee to meet with Scott as far as.
I think some of the programs we've done over the.
Yeah, we could have two people from our committee on it.
Meet with Scott.
Okay. Sounds good. Any more things left? Thank you staff and Mrs. Gilo and board members. Meeting is adjourned.
Nice job. Very good job.